Ready.
Okay, do you want to call the meeting to order? Okay. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jane Grisenda. And I am the moderator for the 2021 Financial Town Meeting, and I hereby bring this meeting to order. Now I kindly ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United to of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our panelists this evening. Our town manager Benjamin Marshant, our superintendent of schools Craig Levis, and our assistant town solicitor David D'Agostino. This meeting is called to give an opportunity for the public to ask questions and address their concerns to the town officials concerning the 2021 and 2022 town budget. On Thursday, June 10th, there is an all-day referendum where voters will have an opportunity to vote in favor or against this budget. The location of polling places are available on the town's website. This meeting will be run in accordance with the town charter and the laws of the state of Rhode Island. My job as moderator is to maintain order and make sure everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity to do so. When you want to be heard, kindly wave your hand on the Zoom program, and the Zoom administrator will acknowledge you and give you an opportunity to be heard. All questions must be directed through me, and the appropriate town official will respond. We ask that you provide your name and address before posing your question or comment, and that you limit your questions or comments to the subject of the 2021-2022 town budget. Again, there are no votes being taken tonight. Voting is on Thursday. I open the meeting to your questions. Do we have anybody with a question?
Madam Moderator, I do have a presentation that we can introduce the budget with to kick things off. If.
Yes, please proceed.
All right. Share my screen. Can everyone see the front page of the presentation? All right, great. So we have the the town of Coventry and the Coventry Public Schools worked closely together in preparing this year's proposed budget. And the the theme I have brought to this budget is that today's decisions determine tomorrow's opportunities. The proposed budget anticipates revenues of $111,763,164. This includes a 2.99% increase to the tax levy, which accounts for two for about 2.32% increase of the overall budget. The expenditures for the town, general operations and all departments, is $31,134,641. For debt and contingency, the expenditures will be $2,824,237. No capital expenditures were planned for this budget. Expenditures for school bond debt is $2,397,463. And expenditures for the Coventry Public Schools for all seven schools, the high school, the middle school, and the five elementary schools is $75,406,823. For total expenditures of $111,763,164, which is a balanced budget where revenues equal expenditures. This proposed budget will provide a level of service that meets the needs and expectations of the community in a responsible and reasonable manner. This budget restores much of what was cut or discontinued during the 2020 COVID emergency response. The focus is on maintaining services and improving operating efficiencies. As this is a lean budget, this will not provide resources to improve services or take on special projects that may be of concern to certain parts of the community. Coventry Public Schools in their presentations has emphasized the following priorities: addressing student academic, social, and emotional needs; expanding learning opportunities for all students; maintaining current levels of service; and developing and implementing high-quality and robust curricula for pre-K through 12 and beyond. They have professional development for all staff; an increase in Coventry CTE enrollment; and the maintenance requirement under state law of 2.5% of their operating budget. Use of federal COVID funds to provide necessary interventions and address structural deficit is also included. The town of Coventry, for their priorities, is to provide responsive and timely service to residents' calls for service; ensure public safety through quality law enforcement, transportation, health and development services; deliver library, parks, and recreation services that meets community health needs for health, information, and leisure; provide accurate, professional, equitable, and sustainable governmental, financial, and administrative services; and improve community planning and development efforts to meet the economic, social, beautification, and community service needs now and in the future. I will post these slides on the website so that the public can return to see how the budget is broken down. They can find, anyone can find additional detail in the previous presentations that were made throughout this budget process. This increase to the tax levy will, in this table, shows what a homeowner can anticipate in the change in their tax bill. So for a property with an assessed value of $200,000, their tax bill currently is $3,794. And under this levy increase would go up $87 for the year, or less than $10 a month, for $3,881. Similarly, for an assessed value of $300,000, it would go up $131,400, up $174. These are based on the tax rates of $19.41 per thousand. So anyone can take that and apply it to their home's assessed value to determine what their tax bill would be. And that is the end of my presentation for this evening, since this is the budget that was approved and put forward by the Coventry Town Council and School Committee.
Thank you. Madam Administrator of Zoom, our Mr. Administrator Cody, do you have anybody that has their hand raised?
Are we accepting public comment at this time?
Is there, are there any further presentations, Mr. Marshant?
I would invite Mr. Levis to speak if he would like, but he's shaking his head.
Okay, all right.
They're a joint presentation, so I think it's best to open up to questions.
Okay, very well then. Why don't we open the floor to questions? And Cody, if there's anybody that has their hand raised, please invite them to speak.
There's no one at this time, but we can give it a minute. We have one request. I'm going to bring them in now.
Okay, thank you.
Larry.
Larry Manier, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Larry Manier, 170 Richardson Road. Does the fact that there's no capital budget mean there's absolutely no way to repair any roads or other problems that crop up?
No, the, there is, there are funds in the operating budget for road maintenance. The capital budget would have funded larger road projects that we're not going to take on at this time. But we certainly have funds in the operating budget to maintain the roads we have and keep up with the annual requirements.
How much?
I believe it was about $380,000, but I would have to refer to the budget slides. We do have Finance Director Mills here, who has the budget at her fingertips if she has that number.
Hold on. Hello. Let me pull up roads and bridges. Well, there's several different maintenance of accounts for for the roads. Gosh, I would say it's around we've got repairs for the sidewalks, 80, asphalt study, 95, 25 concrete materials. That's not roads.
The roads and bridges budget specifically, how much was that for?
Yeah, that's about a little over $100,000. I believe the long-term solution, if there's something that's going to require amounts greater than what is indicated here, either we're looking at to use potential COVID funds until those are fully defined. We don't have an exact number on what we could use for that.
The reason I ask is because we pleaded to get our road fixed a number of months ago, and I talked to the crew, and they, the crew wasn't out. They fixed it, and I was talking to the crew, and I said, how come these go so long until they become emergencies? And the crew said, there's absolutely no money to repair the roads. So I gather from this response that that's not true.
Well, we, we actually, the director, Kevin McGee, who's, I don't believe is on the call, but he's actually put out an RFP before the end of this, 630-year-end. And I believe he's, he's trying to repair five roads, and I believe it's around it's over $400,000. So that project is in the works right now. I'm not sure if it's one of the five roads you are talking about, but there is a big project on, you know, that he's putting an RFP out for right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anyone else that would like to ask a question at this time?
Yes, there's two other requests. I'm bringing the first one in now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, this is Roseanne Alfred. I'm at 119 Mohawk Street. I was just wondering about the COVID funding from the federal government. Obviously, we had some of that included there, and I was curious, like, what we have to go through to get more of that funding? Is there more down the road that's going to be factored in? Or is this, is this kind of the end of that? Just some information on that front.
Okay. At this time, no funds have been dispersed to the town, and we are waiting to get that dispersment from the state. And they have 30 days from the time they receive it to make the allocation to the town. And we do anticipate a sum of $10,551,000 that will be allocated to the schools and the town. But since we have not received it yet, we did receive an offer through Representative Norrie to have a member of the Rhode Island Economic Commerce Department come to speak to the council about how the, those funds may be utilized. And so we hope to have that representative at the meeting of June 28th, scheduling permitting.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes, yes, you may.
So, so I can't speak for the town, but for the school department, we have publicly looked at COVID funds that we are projected to receive. Again, we have allocated a certain amount through a public process that we're going to use specifically for our students in terms of summer programs for this summer. We have to spend 25% of it. We also have allocated funds towards intervention. You know, we know that we had an incredibly challenging year. And so that there's monies that we have allocated to provide supports to students when we start up this, not only this summer, but next year. We've also allocated monies for Chromebooks, which will help us reduce, moving forward, an expenditure in the budget for the next three years. So we have been presented numbers. We have publicly gone through a process. So again, from the school department perspective, again, you know, there's different process in terms of the school department and how we value receive funding or will receive it, and then the town.
And just to be clear, is this funding that, so it, it has been promised? Like, we know for sure it's coming through, or it's?
So I can't speak for the town, but I can say for the school, we've been allocated. We have a, actually have an application that we have to fill out for what's called SRT2 funds. And the schools received about $2.4 million, and we have to fill that out by July 1st. And so we've met with the school committee. It's been a public process, and we've identified. And we have to submit that to the Department of Education by July 1st. So again, I don't, I'm not, you know, the process for the municipal side has been different than the school side. So these are one-time funds that we'll receive, that we're utilizing to benefit our students and our families.
Thank you.
The town did receive an initial dispersment. And I'll ask Director Mills to give that amount and report on whether we have a more specific number about the funds that we anticipate.
So the first amount we received is under the Trump administration, which was $2.3 million. And we, we had to fill out an application to, and it had to be shown that we use those funds for COVID-related and safety-related expenditures. And they were utilized for the police. Pretty much, we used all the police payroll to qualify for the 2.3 million that was allotted to the town. But as far as the new COVID money that came out under the, the current administration, we haven't received any of it yet. And I've been on directors' calls, finance directors' calls. And the state, at last, the last call I was on, the state had not received any of the money from that first tranche of the COVID. Unlike the, the school department, they have received some, but we have not from the Biden administration.
All right, do we have another question?
Yes, I'm waiting in Erin Brewster.
Hi, this is Erin Brewster, 46 Monroe Drive. My question is, when will house values be reassessed? And when that happens, what's your process for changing the tax levy based on those new prices? Given that housing values have gone up significantly over the last year?
The town assesses home values on a three-year basis, I believe. Forgive me, I've only been here two months, so if there's any headaches, if I get off track, let me know. But I believe the last assessment was done in 2019. And so the next assessment would be due in 2022. And the effect that the change in assessed value has is that as property values increase, the state has a limit as to the amount that the town's levy can increase. And so if home values go up by more than 4%, the levy is capped at a 4% increase, which is also determined by the passage of the budget and the public vote. So the budget that's been put before you is a 2.99% increase under that 4% cap. And what happens if home values increase more than that? It has an effect of reducing the overall levy rate to, to essentially lower the rate that's being charged against that higher tax levy to produce more or less the same levy amount for the town to operate. It's kind of complex, and if I lost you, I'm happy to repeat it or ask Director Mills to to give a stab at it.
Okay, so let me make sure I understood what you said. So we're gonna, you're proposing a levy of 3% or just under 3%? And if housing values go up by 4% or more, we're actually getting levied at a 4% rate versus a 3% rate?
Sorry. So if your home value, let's just, in simple numbers, your home value went from $100,000 to $200,000, and you're paying $1,500 in taxes, your tax bill would not double. It could only go up by 4%. So instead of paying $19.41 per thousand, that number would be rolled back to $15.70 per thousand, and you would still pay the same amount of taxes, even though your home is valued higher.
Okay, thank you. I think that I understand.
All right, do we have another question?
Bringing in Bradford Mayor right now.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Bradford Mayor, 360 Hope Furnace Road. Last year, the public was promised a performance audit and was told that there were at least funds set outside of the budget to get the process started. My two questions are, are there any monies in or outside of this year's budget to make sure we have enough to complete the audit? And will the audit be completed before next year's budget season?
So I have gotten a quote from our auditor for a scope of services to perform such an audit, and that has yet to be reviewed by the town council. The expense for that audit is something that the town can afford to do with the resources that it has, even though it's not explicitly set aside in this budget. There are funds available from prior settlements that we are anticipating to commit to that purpose. The scope of services is, anticipates completing at least one phase of a performance audit within six weeks. Because the size of the town, with the town departments and the school department, we're going to have to do it a bit at a time to keep it manageable.
All right, thank you.
Madam Moderator, there are two hands raised, but there are people who've already talked. I'm just going to ask them, unless they have another question, to, to lower their hands.
Yes, please do that.
And if they don't, I will bring them in, assuming they have a second question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm going to bring in Larry, because he has not lowered his hand.
Larry Manier, 170 Richardson Road. I just really want to congratulate the town for the wonderful new trash collection system. I know it's a couple of years old, but that, we love it. And I'm just wondering, did it ever save us any money?
That was before my time, and I can't speak to that. Some analysis would have had to have been made. But I can say that we will continue to look at that to improve this operation to make sure we can maintain that level of service and your satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another person that would like to speak?
Yep, there is a repeat commenter. I'm gonna what in now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thanks. Roseanne Alfred, 119 Mohawk Street. Just, this is just more of a general comment, and it might just be my own difficulty. I'm a relatively new resident to the town of Coventry. And I just struggled actually finding information about when the meetings are happening. And if there was ways to kind of, and I, and I don't, I don't have suggestions here, but I know I've really struggled and had to keep my eye, like, on the town website, and that's pretty much been the only place. Maybe the reminder sometimes has something in there. But if there was a way maybe to get information out a little better to the community about when the meetings are, when the votes are, and just information generally about, you know, what's included in the budget and some explanation for it, that'd be, that'd be really great.
What would be an effective way for you to receive information like that?
Um, certainly, I think some, you know, some kind of a flyer would be nice in the mail, but I know that's a challenge to get to all residents. And I think just in general, you know, if I were to type in "town of Coventry, Rhode Island" like into Google, it would be nice if it was something that, like, really popped in the search, rather than having to be like, okay, let me go to the town website, let me, like, dig through all the things in there to figure out what's upcoming. And I think the site has gotten a little better that way in terms of, like, you get to the meetings, they're listed right there. But I've just always found it a bit of a challenge finding information about each of these budgets and when all the meetings and votes are.
Thank you.
Cody, is there anyone else?
Yep, I'm going to bring Michelle Ulette in now.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Michelle Ulette, 54 Calvin Town Road. Thank you for your time. One, in response to that prior woman's comment, I agree. It could possibly, maybe a suggestion would be either through an email system or, because we had to put our email in to register for this meeting tonight, or maybe a Facebook page. I know that I follow the Coventry Police Department's Facebook page. I don't really know if the town has one. That's another suggestion, maybe, but that wasn't my question. My question was that it looks like the school department is the biggest part of the budget based on those slides that you were showing earlier. So how, in other words, how do we make sure that the school department is being run as efficiently as possible to keep that under control? So?
Well, the school committee is elected to represent you and the other members of the districts on this, on the school committee, and they are responsible for directing the superintendent accordingly. And that is the chain of accountability.
Okay. And so I presume they must also have meetings like this?
Yes.
Or, okay, so again, how do we find out when those meetings are so that we can weigh in on those discussions or at least hear the information?
Michelle, this is, Madam Chair, can I, or Moderator, can I, do you mind if I answer the question?
Just identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry, yes, it's pretty glad this superintendent.
Yes, please, please.
We, I think communication is something, Mr. Coward, who's our assistant superintendent, sent out a survey to parents in about half hour. He had over 600 responses. And it was specifically around how do we, people want to get, have information communicated? So we have school public meetings that are posted, just like the town, they're posted on the Secretary of State's website. We're just, we've had a lot of feedback about our website. Our website has been, you know, homegrown, you know, we haven't invested any money. We recently we have like a soft opening that'll have our, all of our meeting information very easily accessible. But you know, that's something I know Mr. Marshon had asked another attendee about ways that they like to receive information. You know, we find that parents, you know, families that have children have access to a lot of the information, but we want to make sure we get out to the entire community so that they see the value of, of having a robust school system and are engaged in the process. So we're constantly looking at that. And if you have suggestions for that, you know, again, we have a Facebook page, we're on social media. But you know, not everybody searches for that information. So it's, but it's, it's a great question because we want to make sure that we don't have these meetings just for our benefit. They're public meetings for a reason so that we can engage the community and questions like you, you know, you asked, um, you know, we have to be accountable. There's, you know, in every district, schools are the largest part of a budget. But you know, we want to make sure that our, our community understands how we spend our money, where it's allocated and what benefit do they, they receive from this allocation? So you know, that's a great point. We are always open to suggestions, but we haven't found the perfect way to communicate yet, but we are in search of it.
Yes, when I had my children in school, I did know a lot of the stuff, but having moved, I grew up in Coventry and went to Coventry Schools. And, but having moved back recently into the town, I don't have children anymore in the school. So yeah, I'll have to look up your Facebook page. I did not realize there was one. So I will search for that this evening.
Another thing you can do is from the town website, you can click on the Gov portal link and sign up to have email notifications of meetings.
Oh, perfect. Okay. I will do that then. That is very good information. Thank you.
There's also a town Facebook page as well, if I may comment. And you can sign up for the code red notifications as well through the town page or the police page. And that'll give you town notifications either through phone, email, text, or however you wish to receive them.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do we have any other raised hands?
There is currently, oh, there is now one request. I'm gonna, what in Cheryl?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Richard D. Maria from 37 Fieldstone Drive, Coventry. A couple of questions. I've been living here 22 years. I've attended numerous meetings. You know, it's every year we're in the same boat, it seems. Has anybody looked at cost savings as far as consolidation of healthcare programs? I mean, I don't know if the town has one healthcare program for the town employees and the school. You know, that, that's a way of consolidating and, you know, strengthen numbers. Part two of my question is, has anybody done a cost analysis of our school system and our budget as compared to other towns of the equal size to see how we fare, whether we're doing better than them or, you know, not as good as them, et cetera. You know, these are two things that we need to look at and I've never heard anybody in 22 years I've been here look into that or discuss that, at least in the meetings I've listened to.
Well, I'll take your questions in two parts and I'll, I'll take the first part and offer Superintendent Levis to answer the second part. For the first part, the town does participate in the Rhode Island Municipal Trust insurance pool. This is a self-insurance program where we are aggregated with other municipalities to get the economies of scale as a larger group for very competitive healthcare benefits that are far below market rates and, and very good quality. So from the health insurance standpoint, we're doing very well. Our health insurance increases from year to year have been very low in the single digit percent increases, outperforming just about every private plan out there. So I can attest that the, the town of Coventry is managing their insurance costs very well. And the program is, is performing just the way you would hope it would be.
So I'll address the second part. I mean, again, going back to our public meetings, we're constantly presenting data. The state compares us, the, the reason we have what's called UKO, Unified Chart of Accounts, was so that you could look at district from district and see how much they spend on leadership. How much do they spend on per pupil expenditures? How much are we spending, you know, per, per student? How much do we spend for legal services? So there is a unified chart of accounts where you can go in and look at school by school district. The other part is, and we welcome the performance audit that the, the town manager talked, spoke about because I think, you know, in my short time here in Coventry, there's been concerns around trust and, and I feel that one way, I, I've been a participant in a, in a performance audit and I think that would show the community how we do in terms of like, for, for instance, one of the things they look at is class size. Our, our, our class is 80% at, at 80% capacity. They'll look at our special education program, something we talked about is that many districts our size have 60 to 80 students out of district, which means you're paying tuition for those students to go to other schools. We have in the twenties of students out of district and some of those are students that are, are sent to us by the state. So we've, we've invested a lot of money in special education within our district. We keep a lot of our students in our schools. So there's a lot of different factors that you could look at. I think that's something we talk about on a regular basis on our school committee meetings. But the reality is if the public isn't attending, we have to find a better way of communicating that information. I think one of the areas will be our new website. We're also have an app that's affiliate with the website. So anybody can put it on their phone and have all this information at their fingertips. So, but I, I agree. I think that this performance audit, I believe, will be very helpful to this community to demonstrate how efficient, how effective both the schools and the municipal side are. And it'll clear the air, I think, for a lot of people that may have concerns. You're saying you've been here 22 years and so I, I think that's a great way for us to move forward.
Oh, can I, can I chime in? This is Don Coward, the Assistant Superintendent for the School Department. Can I just add to Mr. Levis's comment?
Certainly.
I quickly jumped online and looked up our, our per pupil cost. It's 15,661, which is puts us in the bottom third of all of the districts in the, that's the 2019 number, by the way. 15,661, that puts us in the bottom third of all the districts in terms of their per pupil amount. And the other thing I was gonna say is when you look at our ranking in terms of how we perform against other districts, and this has been said in numerous school committee meetings and joint meetings with the town, most of the districts that perform better than us are much smaller than us. Well, at our size, we perform, I, I don't know if there's any other district other than Cumberland, that's our size that is performing higher than we are in the US News rank or the, or Niche.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another hand raised?
There are no other hands up this time.
Does anyone have anything else to say or any other comments?
Everyone who's on the call gets out and votes.
There is one more request, public request.
Oh, certainly. Go ahead.
All right, I'm wanting in Joshua now.
Hi, this is Josh Clements, 10 Gentry Farm Drive. I guess to maybe say in shorthand what you, what you just covered, Mr. Coward, is we have above average performance for below average costs.
Correct.
Right.
So I, I, you know, I, I know there's a couple of comments echoing around around performance audits, but I think that, that performance audit right there of below average cost, above average performance for, for schools kind of speaks to itself. I have been paying attention for the past year or so, maybe even longer. I haven't been in town 22 years, but appreciate the work of this, this town council and the school committee to, you know, deliver results and a budget that, that will work for the, for the near coming future. And yeah, thank you.
Do we have any other raised hands, Cody?
There are, yep, there's two more requests now. I'll bring the first one in now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, hello, Christopher Wiley, 56 Hell Avenue, Coventry. I just want to make sure I heard this right. So Mr. Coward had mentioned that because we have such a large sized school, that justifies the lower performance?
No, I, I
I would enjoy if you could elaborate on that.
Yeah.
That's what I got out of it.
I referenced the size because the, the previous speaker had said compared to schools like us. And so I interpret that as being like sized districts. So I was comparing how we do in performance to like sized districts. We've said in numerous meetings that we definitely have a ways to go and there's definitely work to be done. We're not a top 10 district. We're a top 20 and, and we know that there's a lot of work to do. I was just referencing the size in reference to what the caller had mentioned about districts and leg size.
Okay, I, I think the important part that everyone should understand is we're still in the bottom third.
We're in the bottom third in the per pupil cost, meaning we spend less per students than many, two thirds of the districts above us. So our per pupil cost is much lower than two thirds of the rest of the districts in the state. Our performance is, when I ranked, when I mentioned our performance, I was comparing us to different district sizes in terms of where we rank and how we perform on the different metrics they measure us against. But the per pupil cost is in the bottom third in the 2019 per pupil calculation.
Now, the, the last meeting that I was able to attend, we were bringing out performance metrics in 2018. Do we have any more recent metrics for the, for the schools?
Yeah, so the, the metrics get usually updated every year and, and I'm certainly not trying to blame things on COVID, but what happened is in is usually one year behind. And so the 220 standardized tests that get distributed and done at the school level were not done. So there was new, no testing in 2020. And this year is 2021, so we did do testing this year. So we should probably get some more updated data on the performance of our students ranked against other districts next year.
I see. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's one more request. I'm wanting them in now.
Yes, getting back to my original question about the order, I'm not disputing the numbers that were thrown out.
Identify yourself for the record. Can you identify?
I'm sorry, this is, this is Richard D. Maria, 37 Fieldstone Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you're welcome. I'm not disputing what Mr. Coward said. Obviously, it's, it's correct. But when you look at numbers, I'm sure there's more. You can't just pick and choose. You have to look at the whole big picture. You need somebody who does this, you know, for a living, who looks outside the box, is coming in, looking at the numbers, doing a cross comparison and coming up with the whole big picture, not just student cost analysis. There's a lot more into it than that. Obviously, for 22 years, I think 20 of them, we've been in financial problems where we've had to come back and, you know, revote and, you know, I've had children in the school system. I still have them in the school system. I've always voted for it begrudgingly. But I, I gotta say, for 22 years, it's been the same story. You know, every year it's the same thing and everybody's fed up and everybody I talk to says the same thing. You know, we get held ransom, oh, we're gonna cut sports and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. It's the same thing. I understand those are the, the low hanging fruit to reduce the costs. But I think people in this town, they, they made their, their feelings loud and clear the last year. To myself, I did not. I voted for the, the increase. But I understand totally what they're coming from. I think it'll put a lot of people to rest if they know exactly how we compare across the board and to the same size schools. And it'll go a long way, especially if, you know, the numbers come out like Mr. Coward was saying, and I'm not doubting that they will. But I think the people in this town really need to know that and feel comfortable with that so that we can move forward. And they can vote to pass a, a higher budget.
Do we have any other hands raised that have not spoken yet?
Any? Nope.
None that have not spoken yet, but there is one request.
Okay.
Question?
Would you like me to let them in?
Yes, please.
Okay. Roseanne Alfred, 119 Mohawk Street.
Sorry.
One thing, just to shout out to Kimberly Shockley, I was complaining about communication, but one thing that did definitely come through is on the Nextdoor app. I got a really great kind of breakdown of things that had been covered in a recent meeting and that was super helpful because obviously, you know, life gets busy and sometimes you can't make every meeting. And so getting kind of a rundown of what was talked about and, you know, what things are on the docket, that, that really helped. So I just wanted to share that piece. That was one thing that definitely got through.
Thank you.
I'll share them over there. I always share them on Facebook, but I don't go on Nextdoor a lot and it doesn't occur to me, but I'll do that after our meetings as well from now on.
Thanks.
If I can make a comment, Madam Moderator?
Yes, please.
All the meetings are also recorded and on our town YouTube page, so anybody can do them afterwards at their convenience.
Okay, do we have any other hands raised or anyone else that would like to speak?
There is one again. I'll bring them in. They may have left their hand up by accident.
Okay, all right. We'll give it a minute to see if anybody else comes on, but.
There's one more request from Mr. Clements. I'll bring them in now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Josh Clements, 10 Gentry Farm Drive. I guess a more general question. Unfamiliar with some of this process, but are there other towns that have a similar format of financial town meetings, right? Are we afforded an extra, we'll say, ability to vote on the town budget and that is what has made it so challenging in this town over the past several years and or, you know, decades, you know, pointing to the, to the previous caller.
So to answer your question, this is not the only town in Rhode Island that has a financial town meeting and a public vote on the budget. There are fewer municipalities today than there used to be as other communities have moved away from a public budget vote and have set up budget commissions and other forms of deliberation to reach a, an annual budget. So that even in the town of Coventry over the years, the form and manner of the charter has changed with regard to the financial town meeting. And this is a an evolved process from where the town has been in the past.
Very good. Thank you. I guess just to, to reiterate, you know, my, my kids are young. They're just starting in the school district. So I guess I'm looking forward to 220 plus years of, of voting for budget increases. I think, you know, in this case, it's warranted. We didn't have any budget increase last year fully support the town and pushing for property tax increases to fund this town and the school budget operations. But there are other methods out there, right? And I've spoken about this at previous town council meetings, right? It doesn't rely solely on the citizens of Coventry. There, there's other action into state budget to raise taxes on the top 1% and, and raise funds either for schools and or other, you know, necessary functions of, of towns, municipalities throughout the state of Rhode Island.
There is one more request from Donna. I will bring her in. There is one more request from Donna. I will bring her in now.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Costantino, 9 Tallwoods Drive in Coventry. I, I realize there's union contracts in place for which there will be raises given to employees and that's, that's not what this question refers to. I'd like, Mr. Marshant, just to elaborate a little bit about the non-union staff. Mostly on the non-school side. Uh, what, what are these raises looking at? I, I know you responded to my email. It could be up as, as high as 5% performance based. How many staff are we talking about? What's the dollar amount that's associated with raises in a time when many are not getting them and many are trying to survive in the business world? And, and as a result, we're, we're facing higher taxes.
So, um, the non-union staff in the town are, I, I'm taking a little bit of a guess because I don't have the figures in front of me, but it's about 30 or so employees. And this includes all of the management staff and a few professional staff who are not represented by, one of the two unions. And, uh, these staff have not received any raises in the last three years. And I, I think that's a considerable amount of time as, as that goes on, uh, the town becomes less and less competitive in the marketplace to retain staff. And, uh, there's a certain amount of, um, obligation we have to them to retain good employees. If we could all have a vote at the gas pump, we would all vote to keep gas at a dollar a gallon, but, um, that's not the way the world works. So, uh, while we, we do have, uh, an increase budgeted for them in this proposed budget, it's still gonna be based on, uh, personnel evaluation of their performance.
So what's the dollar amount that's associated that you're projecting with these raises that, that fits into that budget? Cause I know.
I did, I did not calculate the aggregate dollar amount because they're spread across several different departments.
Okay. All right. I, I just, um, I'm just seeing a lot of personnel changes at the town. And, you know, most people don't leave once they do get a job and this all gets factored into longevity, retirement, and those costs go up. So I, I, I get the point of retaining employees. But there's also a lot of people looking for jobs as well that, I'm just curious what that impact is on this budget. I have no problem with the school budget whatsoever and I do not send my children to public school. So I'm 100% behind the school budget. Not so much on the town side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody, do we have anyone else?
There are no other requests at the moment.
All right, we'll give it another minute and see if anyone else comes on the line. Does anybody in the panel have any further comment?
I would comment. I don't know if you can see me.
Uh, excuse me?
That's Kimberly Shockley.
Oh, yes. Hi, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to thank everyone who came on to tonight's meeting. I know it's different from past meetings where amendments could be made to the budget and people still ask really good questions. You know, this year between, um, finishing out the budget cycle, starting this one and hiring on a new town manager and a new finance director, um, we weren't able to start the performance audit. But Ben, having been on for a couple of months, has already looked into, um, how we can begin that process. So it is a process that we had put out when we were running. I know I referenced it, um, on numerous occasions and it is, um, being planned. Um, right now we're looking to get out of a budget cycle so we can really start, um, having an outside source look at how we're spending. Um, and I really appreciate both, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, Marshant coming in new and Mr. Levis being so open, um, to the idea of that third party. So I just wanted to, once again, thank everyone. And thank you all in advance for voting on Thursday.
Yes, thank you. So since there are no further comments, uh, or questions, uh, I'm going to remind everyone that's listening that June 10th, Thursday is the all day referendum, um, for you to vote on this budget. And since there are no further comments or questions from the floor, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.